Joining us this time around Crawford County Commissioner Jack Lynch. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good morning, Luke. How are you?
Wonderful. Welcome to the program.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for having me. He's my rock.
Boy, if you made a mistake.
We're gonna have to destroy this tape. That'll hurt during the campaign, Jack. Keep him busy.
Keep him very busy, yes.
Let's catch up on a couple of things. It's been awhile since we had one of the commissioners on the program. Obviously, back in the fall, a lot of talk on some renovations at the courthouse. Are those still ongoing? Those wrapped up? What's going on there?
Yeah, the project that Francis was probably referencing was the new roof, which I'll elaborate on a little bit. And also, the exterior pointing of the building primarily. It hadn't been touched in 50 years.
Well, and you guys have pointed it towards Titusville now. So we can see it.
It's reoriented. So be careful during your air travel. We had to notify the FAA and change all the charts, the whole thing. One of the things we found out, and interestingly enough, is that the third floor of the courthouse where I was for 19 years is extremely hot, which tells us something in terms of what the heat loss was through that roof. That was overdue by some years. It was a topic of some conversation two years ago during the campaign. And in many ways, it's a no-brainer. So that work is completed. And also, the last remaining piece is the interior of the clock. And that's an interesting thing. That clockwork goes back to the 30s. And we took quotes for the more electronic versions where you'd have the latest and greatest gizmos. It would be... There's nothing wrong with it. It just needed to be addressed. So we had a local guy come out and for about $5,000, the whole gears of it were stripped out. And when you think about those gears, they're on posts that go out on three levels. I mean, they only turn a little bit at a time. I mean, it's not the gears in your car. So they should last a lifetime and beyond, once they got cleaned up and realigned and so forth. So it will be done in toto in the next couple of weeks. So we think Mr. Coburn would be wrapped up and that project would be complete.
Sounds like you've become a real expert in clockwork.
It's an interesting thing because it actually has some historical significance. You don't see it, but I mean, that's a nice feature to maybe take a look at as it relates to something that's very old that works very well.
Wow. Kinda like Mark. Kinda like Mark.
Kinda like Mark a little bit. I wasn't gonna say that.
Right.
I'm just a well-oiled machine.
Now, along with that, there's been a lot of conversations. And I know that anytime you're... Anytime, you know, especially being in the position you're in, you make a decision and people like it or they don't. Or, you know, now the Talon project comes up again.
Yep.
You know, they don't want to spend the money on it. And then they discover some money has been spent on it to do research on whether it's a viable project. And then maybe we're not gonna go that direction. So people get upset because you've spent money, but you're not gonna do it.
Absolutely.
So you're dealing with that right now.
Correct. But can we revisit that just for...
Sure.
Because it's such a happy topic of all of ours. When the building was purchased back in February of 2010, it was purchased from the Redevelopment Authority of the city of Meadville. It had some tenants in there. Its experience as an incubator was not successful. It's an enormous structure for all the reasons we could talk about. But it was purchased from the Redevelopment Authority from the city. So it was off the tax rolls, I guess is what I'm saying. But what happened next was interesting. It was 2010. The architectural firm was procured. I had a hand in that that would look into the whole issue. That was Webber Murphy Fox that spring. Webber Murphy Fox was brought on board. And interestingly enough, that fall, there was a group seated, CIC, Citizens Advisory Committee, to take a look at what do we do? Think about it. I mean, maybe the best thing would have been to flip that whole process, have a CAC brought in to take a look at the feasibility, the pros and the cons, procure an architect to take a look at that, and then make a go-no-go decision on the building. Having said all that, when we arrived into office, we had the building and we had no plan. We had the recommendations of a CAC that were brought in. And one of the things they told us was primarily that after looking at the problem in toto that is the county government in terms of where it's at was doing nothing is not an option. I mean, you do something. And that was a good group. That wasn't a group that knee-jerked this thing. I mean, they took their time. It was headed by Bill Eldridge of Conyote Lake. Locals were on it like Keith Bromley, Jim Becker. The point of it is, we took that seriously in terms of doing something. And what do you own? Well, you own this facility on the hill. And it's important to know a couple of things. Webber Murphy Fox, who is an exceptional institutional architect in terms of some of the projects that relate to government or something like a hospital or something, university, they understand what they're doing. So programmatically, the work that they did, Mark, the work that they did had a lot to do with assessing who we were as a county. Who, how many folks were involved in juvenile probation, adult probation, domestic relations? Some look at the growth potential for these and consolidation, all of the factors that would feed into a project, period, in terms of... I mean, that's transferable to some extent from whether it's the Talon or something else or nothing, but at least you have a picture of who you are. Second thing with related to costs, really, the Talon is a collection of buildings. They call them Building C, Building B, Building A. Building A being probably the most viable building to begin with. Building C was in the worst shape. It had no plans for anything. It had to come down irrespective of what you did with it, even if you sold it. So that was knocked down. That was abated and knocked down. Building B was abated. That's the environmental work that was done, asbestos and so forth. And those were primarily your big expenses. And to a lesser extent was the separation of the utilities. In other words, Building A, which is still up and running, all of the utilities were separated physically from the hulk that is Building B. So those elements that informed where we are today actually would go into whatever you do, whether you convey this facility, whether you knock the balance of it down, or whether somebody buys it for X amount. It's actually teed up a little better shape than it was two years ago. So those sunk costs that went into it is... Are compelling, to be sure, but you can't necessarily know what you're doing unless you know what you have.
Right.
And I'll give you an example of that. I had a gentleman approach me. He was kind of upset that we spent any money on it. And he happens to be a lawyer. And I said, "Well, here's the deal. When you get a case, and irrespective of your own feelings about that, you have to give that case a due diligence. That's your job." We did that. I think that in terms of being a sunk cost, moving forward with a project up there is a moot point. The key question in the next time I'm in here is, what do you do with it? And that's the key question on everybody's mind. What do you do with this asset?
Where do most of the concerns come from? Are they coming from folks directly in Meadville? Are you hearing a lot of outside?
Isn't it interesting?
Titusville, Conyote Lake.
Everywhere.
Everywhere?
The interesting thing about this is the local community, I'll call it the neighborhood that surrounds the perimeter of the Talon, they were some of the very first people we talked to. And you see them now and again. They were very concerned that the county wouldn't do anything with it. I think the big concern chief among them was that you would have weeds growing up through the cracks, windows broken, that kind of thing. So they're... Were, for the most part, advocates of doing something. The county doing something at that site. Because whatever you put there is probably gonna be a lesser threshold than an industrial use. A little more neighborhood-friendly, maybe more traffic, but a little more, you know, it had hours of operation from A to B, from 8:30 to 4:30 or whatever. So that was not a problem. The problem primarily comes from, and again, folks that say, "Hey, you spent X amount up there. You spent $1.6 million, you know, up there. What about that?" So we get that, and that's why we use the opportunity, if we can, to talk to folks like yourselves. Now, explain a little bit of where we are, what we've spent, and where we think we're going with this thing.
Do you find that with the economy today that some of that investment money is drying up a little bit? I mean, would somebody normally 10, 20 years ago look at that property and say, "Wow, I could do something with this," and invest some money? Or how much has changed?
Well, take a look at the big picture. We have in Northwest Pennsylvania, I mean, we're not growing leaps and bounds. Hopefully, we'll talk a little bit on gas. But we're not growing leaps and bounds here in terms of a robust Texas-style economy right now. We're just not. So a lot of the properties that would be repurposed or redeveloped, I mean, we don't have a glut of them necessarily, but we don't have a shortage of them. So yes, I think that, and Mr. Becker, somebody who's involved in that on a daily basis, would probably tell you that there are plenty of options that are more teed up. For example, in Titusville, the Titusville Opportunity Park or Mark Turner's Park, that could be brought to bear on a need rather than the Talon type of structure. I think it's true.
Along the same lines, there's been discussion too about... And I think the conversation in Titusville has died down a little bit on our bridge. But obviously, some conversations have kicked up over in Meadville about, you know, your bridge situation over there. And again, spending some money on trying to figure things out. Same sort of deal there? Do you have to spend a little bit to figure out whether...
You're talking about Meade Avenue, right?
Correct.
Luke, okay. The Meade Avenue Bridge, to put that in perspective, and I don't want... If I get too verbose here, just cut it.
Okay.
But this has been around since 1990.
All right, that's good. See you next time.
I don't need this. The Meade Avenue Bridge is probably the best example of a situation, right, where you're getting to a process that has a federal oversight. For example, on Meade Avenue, not unlike a lot of bridges, all of the federal highway provisions that you need to satisfy in order to complete the project come in full bear on this thing. You have also a unique situation on the French Crick, which is a naturally warm waterway that has a biodiverse background. There's things called hellbenders and a variety of mussels that are either endangered or protected in some fashion. And you also had a unique thing where that was a historic trust. So having said all that as background, the hoops and the steps that one goes through, irrespective of the owner, whether it's the county, the state, or a city, in this case, the county, need to be satisfied before you can get to B, before you can get to C, before, so forth. So by the time you bring in the U.S. Fish and Wildlife regulations that govern in terms of some of the protected species, the Fish and Boat Commission, the historic preservation folks, and all of the other elements that feed into that project, you'll spend over a million dollars just in the studies to get a biological opinion in terms of a way forward. Now, isn't that interesting? We've talked about this. And without going on a bashing spree, the partners in this project, which is PennDOT primarily, have been excellent. I mean, we have met since we've been in office once a month on a conference call. Once a month. In terms of the status of this thing and the next steps and what we have to do. And you might recall that we thought that we would have this thing open in the fall of 2014. At least, that was on the program. That was the timeline that was each etched out a couple of years ago. We're not gonna make that. But your point is well-taken. And I think that to the extent folks understand that the process is astounding in terms of its sequential nature of it, the interdependence of it, the steps that have to be undertaken, which I'm no expert, by the way. But it doesn't take an expert to understand that this whole process is choking these projects to the point where you have to ask yourself if they're even a viable project after a while, quite frankly.
You know, we saw a lot of this here in Titusville when the discussion about the bridge on Perry Street came up.
That's me, by the way. I'll just put that down there. I apologize.
That's no problem. We know you're a busy guy. But a lot of this came up with the discussion on the Perry Street Bridge here. And there was an enormous amount of education that had to take place so that folks could understand all of the steps that are involved in making some sort of bridge repair. For instance, the... We learned that the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission had quite a hand in this. And that astounded a lot of folks as to why a museum commission would be involved in a road bridge, you know? And I guess where I'm going with this is you probably spend a lot of time in educating the public on this, don't you?
Well, let me tell you that it's an education all the way across the board, Mark. And when I say that, guys, what I'm talking about is if I go back to my early years as a young guy in engineering firm in Cleveland, Ohio, we would be contracted for and design buildings all over the South. This was, it was typical. I'm talking like Route 10 in Mississippi, Alabama, Texas. And the process that... And this isn't, you know, grandpa's there. This is my lifetime. Maybe I'm getting to be grandpa. But the reality of it is, by the time you design something, just generally speaking, right, and the time you got your permitting and the go to go do that thing, whether there was zoning or what have you, you always had some kind of a Rojman Sedimentation Control Plan. You always had, if there was even, excuse me, zoning. And you also had local permitting. Those typically took up to 90 days to get. Typically. It wasn't unusual, unless there was an unusual circumstance. Fast forward since the mid-'80s to where we find ourselves today, just generally speaking, the permitting itself is an education in and of itself, whether it's a bridge crossing, a state waterway, whether it's, I mean, just generally speaking, out there. You cannot appreciate the numbers of steps you go through, particularly if you've got anything that has a hit, whether it's a wetlands, or you might find something archaeologically significant, or there's something to do with an endangered species, which informs when you can work in the waterway. For example, it limits the time you can actually be working in that stream. So it's not just understanding it. It's there is a bevy. There are whole cottage industries that have inserted themselves over the years that can assist on that project and become part and parcel of something. That's why I said you can spend up to a million dollars or more on a project before you knock one thing down. And it's not unusual. And that's the kind of thing in terms of delivery of these projects. You know, how come we can't get this done? Look, it's been planned since 1993. It has everything to do with the number of steps you go through in a competing environment with a limited funding stream. You don't just earmark that whole nut of $7 million right now. You dole it out over time. There's just not enough money in the system, generally speaking.
Right. So then, your opinion, and we'll start with Meadville, that bridge will be open within a year or two?
Well, here's where we're at, I mean, specifically with the timeline. We have some right-of-way issues that we're going through as we speak on both sides of the bridge, that it would be the Vernon Tatchup side and the Meadville side. If we can surmount those, then we will be on track to commit construction dollars this fall. And it's kind of the deadline to do that for a spring, a winter letting and a spring start. And yeah, we would have the bridge done by the end of 2015. And interestingly, right, I mean, the actual design and construction of the bridge is the easy part. Think about it. I mean, after 1993, I mean, it's not even that complicated in the sense of an engineering sense. But the reality of it is, to get to that point is significant. And these become milestones that 20 years ago almost didn't exist.
Right. Titusville situation, is that something that's still gonna be years of planning and looking at?
Perry Street? You're talking about South Perry? I don't think you're gonna run into the level of scrutiny, the level of degree that we ran into in terms of the structure that is the Meade Avenue Bridge over the waterway that is the French Crick. I think you'll have a streamlined process here. So I'm saying basically, your grandchildren, by the time they're in 10th grade, will...
Excellent.
I'm teasing.
So that's coming?
That's coming fast.
I'm suggesting that that would not take that long. At least, that's the hope on the outside.
Let's move on to a couple of other things.
Sure.
Mark, I think you had the question of Conyote Lake Park. And these are some things that are just, you know, been popping up over the last several months, obviously, news stories-wise.
Yeah, that's been moving along. It's been, I guess, moving toward tax sale. And now, what's the status with that? There's been some newer developments on that, I believe.
There's some very timely developments. As it stands today, the Conyote Lake Park grounds is set to be sold at a tax sale on September 26. And that date is the date that the tax sale happens. There's nothing special about it for Conyote Lake Park specifically. And of course, they've been notified. And if you go back to this, the trustees were going back at least a year. I mean, we got into office and we offered them, there were already bookings. We went out individually and took a look around. The idea at the time, Mark, was that we would have a plan delivered to us that... What would the plan be? Well, the plan would be something the parties can hang their hat on.
Yeah.
You know, it's based on their revenue stream. I don't think anybody anticipated that the whole nut would be paid off in one fell swoop. But something that's reasonable over a short term. We did not get that. So we gave them that first year and then we moved on it. The reality of the thing is, it's a very complex situation in terms of the leases, the number of parcels, all of the things that feed what we know and love as Conyote Lake Park.
And just the plain old bad luck they've had.
And it's been a bad, it's been a bad row. And by the way, I'm not casting aspersions, but what I am saying is the day of reckoning is September 26. But the most recent thing, and I apologize, I wasn't there yesterday. I was a little, I was a little bit clumped. I did miss the work session yesterday. But a group came in and said, "Look, we've got Pumpkin Fest, which is a big event in Conyote Lake. You may have been there, I'm sure. And you've got this thing called Ghost Lake at the Hotel Conyote. We need to book these things. We need to have some assurance that, you know, the park will be around and/or at least available for those kinds of things. So when we get back, we'll take a look at that." Which would be postponing that sale date to sometime beyond those two events, which I think conclude around November 1st or so. So I don't know what the legalities of that harbors. We'll certainly look. It's worth looking at.
Getting close on time here.
Sorry.
No, there's a lot of topics still to discuss. So we had Jim and Deb on the program last week, and they're doing a lot in terms of the shale industry. What's happening on the county level?
Excellent. Yeah. By the way, just give me, give you guys a plug. What Jim Becker and Deb are doing are phenomenal for this community. And honestly, I can't think of another place that I'm aware of. And I get out and about on a community perspective that's been, is in front of this thing and is active. And I mean that. I mean, they were kind of, you know, beating the drum before the drum was there to beat. On the county side, the county has, and Deb is on our county task force, the county has a task force. And one of the more interesting things about this is, you know, you're aware of Act 13 and where that kind of came down?
Right.
Okay. Without getting into that specifically, it's kind of cast a bit of a pallor on the industry, at least in the Commonwealth. If you talk to the folks, which we do at the Marcellus Shale Coalition, there's some uncertainty. And what does that translate into? Well, when there's uncertainty, there's uncertainty of investment. To talk to some folks, it's akin to getting a new driver's license if you're planning to set a pipeline every time you go into a new municipality.
Right. We've heard that.
You've heard that analogy?
Yeah.
I think that's striking. But what the county has done and is doing is, we plug along. And one of the things, Luke, that I found out to be interesting, at the end of January, I went down to a Marcellus Midstream mixer in Pittsburgh. There were about 150 industry types there from New York, West Virginia, Ohio. And one of the, the big takeaway from that is, there's a great level of uncertainty in general, whether you're, you know, a manufacturer of seamless pipe, or whether you supply O-rings, or whether you're over here and outside of Columbus. But one of the things that's true is, we're trying to get a more regional view of what's happening. Not just, our box is Crawford County in terms of its business, industry, and people. What's happening in the area with the port in terms of what that means? And what's happening down in Beaver County here, where the Dutch Royal Shale Cracker Plan is still proposed? They are moving a highway. So our goal, our immediate goal, is to get a better understanding of the regional dynamic, both in Ohio, where there is investment occurring, and the perspective of those places, and see what we can learn. Because we do know some of our industries are already engaged in the oil and gas industry in some level. So the idea would be to reach out and try to bring some of that information here over the course of this year to inform where we go from there.
You know, it's hard not to get political, but these things are political.
Really?
Yeah, it's crazy. You have a governor, and who knows what's gonna happen with reelection. Does that change any sort of deadlines or timeframes to get some of this stuff going?
You know, I don't think so. I think that, you know, let's just...
Or is there a benefit from having, you know, this being an election year?
It could be. But, you know, the facts on the ground today as it relates, for example, to Act 13, that is what it is at this point. When I say that, where do we go from here irrespective of the administration? You are right that, you know, politics does come into play. Like you say, imagine that on a more macro level. But think about this, and I think this is the more important conversation. All of these investments, and they are investments, whether it's Range or Dutch Royal Shale, or somebody else, or even a smaller concern, those investments are not insignificant on the ground that relates to, say, you know, an unconventional well. The landscape is such that if it's easier to put it over a couple counties to the west with relatively speaking, the same amount of extraction that you can glean from that one well, then that's what you're gonna do. Because one of the things investment does not like is an error of uncertainty. So politically speaking, to find a way forward in the wake of Act 13, I think, should be on everybody's plate. It means a lot. But you're right, and that's a good question. And how that would play out, I'm not exactly sure. This administration has been, pledged no new taxes, which informed the whole Act 13 fee schedule, which is fairly Byzantine. But the idea would be that there would be some of those monies spread around at local levels, county, municipal, et cetera.
Mark, any last thoughts, sir?
Well, I was thinking, the analogy that you brought up, that I've heard also, that Act 13 is much now like traveling from one end of the state to the other. If you were to cross one county line into another, you have to get a new driver's license before you can go to the next. Is there any chance that counties will be talking to one another if development heads their way about trying to make that permitting process more uniform, at least in the area under discussion?
Here's the thing, Mark, and this is, yes, the answer is yes. It's a big deal. Let's say whatever, whatever happens here. This is, this industry, this happening that is the Marcellus, the Eduka Shale, is probably the biggest thing that's gonna be a disruption in our lifetime in terms of energy, whether it's a bridge fuel that gets us to the next point before more renewables, or however you view it. But we understand that it's, right now, there's, it's an abundance of supply. There, the demand is not quite there in terms of the conversion. But we see it collectively as the way forward. We do. I mean, there's not been one person, well, very few people would argue that point. It's compelling. It's under our toes. We need to fix this thing at the level of the counties and understand that the permitting isn't done in the courthouse. The permitting is done in all those municipalities.
Yeah.
So from the point of view of trying to streamline a process that would inform the local decision-makers and involve them, but allows us a way forward on a more macro level, has to happen in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It absolutely has to happen. And I was a planner for many, many years, and I get the local control. I get that completely. But if you're trying to plot something that is multi-municipal or intramunicipal or interstate, and you have to stop at each location and do a reassessment, imagine what we're talking about.
Oh, yeah. The delay in time, money.
I think it's worth everybody's while, and I'll be very interested this year to hear out of Harrisburg, some of the thoughts on that. How do we streamline a process that works? That's informed? That is timely? I mean, look what's happening in the big picture now in terms of Europe and the whole Ukrainian situation with their gas supplies. We've got gas here. We've got to find a way to bring it to market. And that starts from the ground up.
I was in Pittsburgh about a month ago, and I actually drove past...
They let you in there? They let you in there?
Yeah, they did.
Wow.
Let me out was another thing.
That's different.
But I drove past a gas station that offered CNG.
Yes.
And the price difference was incredible.
That's a good point. Can I say one other thing?
Yeah.
And then I'll, I'll be quiet for the next two hours.
It'll be a very boring show, but yes, if you want to be a set piece.
The, the local, the Titusville group just brought in O-ring. I mean, they talked about some of the things with payload energy and what they're doing. The county is aware that certain things are happening. That one that you're talking about, was that a station square?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was.
And we're aware of that. And what, think of a Sheetz, right? Think of the, the Sheetz kind of a model where you even have the deli and the whole program. In addition to your low lead and diesel, you've got, you know, the CNG alternative. Smart, smart marketing. And that's the chicken and the egg thing, because we know, for example, those folks are keenly interested in moving. Again, they're looking at the dynamic that'll inform the next placement of their next investment opportunity. Again, we go back to this thing, this is all private sector, the investment side of it, and what works for them. But clearly, that's the way of the future, and I'm, I'm glad you saw that, because we're aware of that as well. I think most counties are.
Well, that's, and it's going to be an interesting thing, because...
Yes, it is.
You know, all I can think of is that with your background as, as a planner, and even further back in engineering, some of this must be awfully frustrating, just on a personal level, sometimes.
A little bit. But you know what? I wouldn't change a thing. The interesting thing is, the young guys coming out of school today, I mean, the, the young, your young engineers, the whole new genre of engineering, it's, it's changed. The basic premise is always going to be the same, it's, it's timeless in the sense, but how you apply that. And the applications for it are vastly different in the last 30-plus years. They truly are.
And here's the, the picture I took. This is from American Natural.
American Natural.
So the station, and this was beginning of, maybe end of January, beginning of February, regular gas was 349 at the time, CNG 193. That's a big difference.
It is a big difference. Now, isn't that interesting, because the market, the marketplace is out there for this? And it's the chicken and the egg. There is a state grant currently available, we're aware of that, and I'm sure Jim's aware of it, that would allow for conversion kits, these kinds of things, and, and new fleet conversions. And right now, a lot of these things are line of sight. For example, in the Titusville area, you might have a fleet like a Hatch Brooks, or some other school district fleet that could make something feasible in the, you know, in the greater area here. Likewise, in Office 79, there are some line-of-sight kinds of businesses. It could be, you know, not the chicken, but the egg in terms of if we can put our heads together, and that's being looked at for some kind of cumulative grant that we can go in. At least it would be the heading in the right direction. This isn't going away. I think we all, we all get that.
Well, I think it's on the radar for a lot of people. I remember Oil City's Public Works Department, even a few years ago, discussing the possibility of converting their fleet to CNG, and it wasn't feasible at that point, but it may be at some point in the future.
I would say it's going to be like flat-screen televisions.
Even think about this, I can say that when I was a young guy, I remember getting hauled out, and there was this box, this huge thing, called a facsimile machine. And do you remember that?
Yeah.
And the early versions went, eh.
Yeah.
And it was on that paper that curled that you couldn't read after six months.
Yeah.
And we walked away thinking, wow, that's, that's amazing. I mean, that, is it going to change? Absolutely, it's going to change things.
I faxed so much, I almost went blind. That's why it's very important to use a cover sheet when you fax, that way you know it's getting to the right spot.
That's a good tip.
Thank you.
Tip of the day.
Tip of the day. All right, we've got to wrap things up here. We could probably do a special four-hour show with, with you, and...
Have comedy.
Have comedy, get to a lot of different topics. But before we leave, it is March, and this is the birth month of Dr. Seuss. And to help encourage kids to read, we think it's great to have people in positions like yourself to take a moment and read an excerpt from a Dr. Seuss book.
Okay.
We chose Green Eggs and Ham, because St. Patrick's Day is right around the corner.
That's right.
And I know that you get into the Irish spirit.
I do.
So here is Crawford County Commissioner Jack Lynch reading an excerpt from Green Eggs and Ham.
This says kegs and eggs.
That is fine as well.
I'll give it a go.
Okay.
With apologies to virtually everybody who hears this. "I do not like green eggs and ham. I do not like them, Sam I am. Would you eat them in a box? Would you eat them with a fox? Not in a box, not with a fox. Not in a house, not with a mouse. I would not eat them here or there, I would not eat them anywhere. I would not eat green eggs and ham, I do not like them, Sam I am.